All right, Scott, we all set?
Yes, sir, we are good to go.
All right. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, June, it's already June, June 1st, 2021. We welcome you to this meeting. It is again being livestreamed by Zoom platform on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC due because of the continuing coronavirus pandemic. Please note this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments or to address council at the appropriate time, we ask you use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. If at any point during the meeting you're having a technical or any connection difficulty, we have John Vernon standing by to assist. His number tonight is 336-513-5440, and I'll provide that number again during any public comment period should you have any technical difficulties. At this time, as a preliminary matter, I would like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Protam Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Very good. Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Animal Services Director Jess Arias.
I'm here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Laster.
Here.
Interim Police Chief Eric Kearns.
He will not be joining us this evening, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Assistant Police Chief Chris Gaddis.
Present.
Fire Chief Jay Mevin.
Present.
Recreation Supervisor Centers and Programs Jane Smith.
Here.
Recreation Center Supervisor Bobby Ruffin.
Here.
Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
A happy June to you, Mr. Mayor.
Planning Manager Conrad Almeida.
Here.
And Recreation Special Event Supervisor Emily Crowley.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Fathers, we come before you this evening. We're so very thankful for your continued blessings upon us. Lord, sometimes in the shadow of negative events, we cease to realize your power and goodwill and the many positive aspects, those aspects in our personal life and our community in general. God, you are the hope, the God of hope. It is your will that all be happy, so please continue to provide your vision, your guidance, and your path that we all may see the beauty in your creation and your gift of everlasting life. Our city is richly blessed, Father. We're blessed with economic growth, with a great quality of life, with sound employment, and with citizens that care about one another and care about our community and our well-being. Our staff is dedicated. Lord, there work to solve the issues that are before them, resolutions that will benefit everyone, seeing the needs of tomorrow like those of today. Continue to bless our staff and provide them your wisdom as they propel us forward. Lord, we ask that you bless this council and the decisions we make. May the topics be studied, researched, and understood so that the outcomes benefit the city of Burlington for months and years to come. Help us to rely on your wisdom and not our own. Guide us with your steadfast hand, and we will give you the praise and the glory. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
We have a couple of recognitions this evening. I'll begin by recognizing Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good evening again. I'm going to share my screen and get a PowerPoint going.
All right, we've got that coming up now.
All right. And there we go. So, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce a special recognition for one of our staff members, our very own Bobby Ruffin. We are subscribers to the Triad Business Journal, a regional business magazine that is throughout the United States. And in the wake of 2020's challenging year and many social events that happened, the Triad Business Journal created a new award to recognize professionals within their readership and in their subscriber base. And this award is called the Leaders in Diversity. That was developed by Triad Business Journal. The awards are intended to celebrate individuals and companies who have worked to establish and advance diversity inclusion efforts in their workplaces and communities. This is the first time that they've ever done this award, so this is the inaugural class. And there are 20 honorees for the Leaders in Diversity Awards through the Triad Business Journal. Eight of those are companies or private organizations, and the other 12 are individuals. And it's a pretty impressive list of folks and organizations who are being celebrated through these awards. There were four categories for the Leaders in Diversity Awards: a top diversity and inclusion officer within an organization or a company, a board champion representing a nonprofit or for-profit board at a company or organization, a diversity champion within an organization, and then an outstanding voice within an organization for diversity leadership. And so, our very own Bobby Ruffin was nominated by the city to be an outstanding voice, and she was selected as one of the 20 awardees in this inaugural award. So what I wanted to do was take a moment to have some of Bobby's peers, her supervisor, and others talk a little bit about the contributions that Bobby Ruffin has made to our community and to the city and the representation that she offers all of us in this role. So I will hand my presentation capabilities off to Ms. Jane Smith at this time.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you so much for nominating Bobby. He went to a lot of trouble, and it is appreciated, but she's so well-deserved. I first met Bobby at the Mako Bigelow Center when she began working with the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department in 2016. As a part-time employee, she began making a difference by putting her special touch on existing programs and launched the Youth Music Mentoring Initiative, Music Camp, and Music Mondays. Her rapport with the public is beautiful. She has an easy way about her, even if there is a challenge. She celebrates everyone's uniqueness, and she never meets a stranger. She's kind to all, and she greets people with a smile and a hello sunshine. That makes everyone feel special. Even when you have a bad day, all she's got to say is hello sunshine, and you're just lifted right up. I look back on her resume when she applied for full-time position, and she stated that she is passionate about her family, and she is passionate about her community. And that is so true. And the work that she has accomplished at North Park has supported her passion. The MLK Celebration, this is one example, that she leads at the Mako Bigelow Center, tripled in attendance from 2018 to 2019. I don't know what we're going to do next year. Bobby's programs embraces the community, so there is something for everyone, and we all feel included. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Jane. Now, Jay Mevin's going to say a few words for Bob.
Hey, I think you're muted.
Am I muted? I shouldn't be. Okay, thank you, Peter, Mayor, Council. I had the pleasure of meeting Bobby not that long ago as I became the Fire Chief. In July of 2020, the pandemic caused Bobby to kind of shift gears with an academy known as King Academy. That stands for keeping inspiring the next generation. And within that program, she allows males, influential males, to speak to these young adults ages nine to 15 years of age. And I was able to participate in that along with Bobby and speak to these youth and inspire them. In saying that, I was also able to participate in a cleanup day with Bobby at Beaumont Apartments. And I'm a talker. I like to meet people, but Bobby has me beat. My fingers were cold, and I think she spoke to everybody out there that day. And we was able to meet some really fantastic adults and young adults by cleaning the community. What I can say about this is Bobby was the perfect fit for this selection, and it's genuine and authentic. So, congratulations, Bobby.
Thank you very much, Jay Mevin. And finally, the Executive Director of the Alamance County African American Arts and Cultural History Center, Ms. Shanice Sellers, to say a few words. Thank you, Shanice.
Hello, everyone. This is such an honor for me to be able to be a part of presenting this award to Bobby. So, I don't remember the first time Bobby and I met because her family and my family has been close for so many years. My mom and her brother went to high school together, so we go way back. But I love Bobby, and I am a huge fan of Bobby and her commitment to the community. And I don't know, this award has the best title to it because I don't know if people know this, but Bobby is not only an outstanding voice here in the community, but she is also an amazing singer. And I've had to call on her for so many occasions to just come and perform and show her talent. But I love the fact that she is constantly thinking about the community and the kids. Last year during the pandemic, she still was out there giving out lunch boxes for Juneteenth, which that will continue this year. And then with our partnership with Elon University, as we were documenting oral history, she's constantly had the kids in mind to get them involved in those projects. And so, Bobby, I just want to say thank you. Of course, you know I am a fan of you, and I just can't wait to see where the future takes you. But this is the most well-deserved award for you.
All right, Bobby, now it's your turn. We want to hear a few words from the recipient herself.
If I can get through without crying. Thank you so much, everyone. I had no idea that we would have speakers on my behalf this evening, so I just want to thank everyone who spoke. And thank you, Peter, for the nomination and just all the work you did to put this together. I didn't know this was an award, and so I'm just honored, I'm humbled, and I count it as a blessing and an honor to get to serve in this way every day at North Park through the city of Burlington. So, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
And certainly, thank you, Bobby, for all your great work. And if any council members or city manager have any comments, please.
Councilmembers, anything else you want to add?
Congratulations, Bobby. This is Bob Ward. Thanks for your contribution to the city. We need more people like you, okay?
Just like Shanice said, I was very impressed with Bobby from the very beginning. And then I found out she could sing, and that just didn't seem fair, that she had that many gifts. But she does. And so, congratulations, Bobby. Well-deserved.
Yeah, it is definitely a blessing to have you both on our staff and in our community, Bobby. Thank you for what you do, what you bring to the organization. It is very much impressive.
And Bobby, you have big shoes to fill over your job you've got. I don't think people understand the importance of that position in that neighborhood and the amount of people you can impact, both young and old. So, we're very fortunate to have you there.
Well, congratulations, Bobby. For anyone on the call who hasn't seen Bobby in action, you are missing out. We appreciate the light and energy that she brings to our community every day. And I always enjoy hearing personal stories from community members who have had the opportunity to interact with her and have their life improved thanks to her dedication. So, congratulations.
Well done.
We have nothing further.
Thank you, Peter. We have another recognition this evening, and this time we call on City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mayor, and congratulations to Bobby. Get a plug in there to a fellow Tar Heel, Bob.
All right.
We didn't get that mentioned before, so go heels. So, Mayor, it's my honor this evening to recognize a valued colleague, Rachel Kelly, who serves as our Assistant City Manager over Administrative Services. Many of you know this. Rachel's last day with the city will be June 11th, and we're not quite sure how we're going to handle June 12th here at City Hall. That is obviously something that's on the forefront of my mind. I want to take time this evening to share a few kind words about Rachel and express our appreciation to her for her service to the city and to our community and the leader that she has become and continues to be here for the city. As Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services, Rachel's responsible for our IT Department, Recreation and Parks, Animal Services, Economic Development, Community Engagement. She also serves as our legislative liaison. As I mentioned, she's departing later this month for a job at UNCG. Tonight will be, although she has a lot more work to do, she's not relieved from her work, although she has a lot more work to do today. This is the last city council meeting for Rachel, so we thought we would take some time this evening to share a few words. Rachel came on board with the city in January of 2011 as Public Information Officer, hired by Councilmember Owen when he was in the City Manager role for the city. Rachel was promoted in July 14 to Director of Public Affairs. Her title was changed in July of 2016 to Director of Public Policy. And then in July of 2018, she became Assistant City Manager for Administrative Services. So, total 10 and a half years with the city. And in that career with us, Rachel has had an opportunity to touch almost every area of city operations. Rachel, we want to thank you for your faithful and your dedicated service. Everybody knows that Rachel works amazingly hard each and every day. She's found ways to positively impact almost every component of what the city does. The list of projects she's taken on and things that she's managed is very, very long, so I'm not going to begin to list those. You all know this, but I'm going to say it for the record, she's willing to tackle almost anything presented to her. She has obviously been sort of a utility player as well in just into catching all the things related to her departments. She's willing to work diligently just to make sure there's a positive outcome in most anything you ask her to take care of. She cares greatly about the Burlington community. She cares greatly about her fellow coworkers. And so, to represent that, I've invited two members of the community to join us this evening and also two of our coworkers to share a few words. We're going to lead off, if his video is up and working, we'll lead off with Rhett Davis, President of the New Leaf Society, and then followed by Ryan Kerr, who's owner of the Burlington Sock Puppets. And then Jessica Arias, Animal Services Director, will say a few words as a colleague. And then Morgan Lassiter will wrap it up. She's our Community Engagement Manager. So, Rhett, if you're on, I'd like to yield the floor to you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, well, the Arboretum Project really has allowed me to get to know Rachel more than I ever have before. I can't tell you how much she has meant to the New Leaf Organization, especially with Arboretum. The Arboretum is the largest project we've ever done to date, $2.3 million of our money to restore Willow Brook Park. We started five years ago, and from the onset, Rachel has been involved from day one. Every Monday of her life, she was in a meeting with city officials and New Leaf officials. And we have gone on, worked out many of the details and the complexity of this gift. She went to every public hearing. She went to every neighborhood meeting that represented the city and answered their questions. What a great presence to have her there. As a result, you've got a new art policy because of Rachel, because New Leaf buys art features. We got a new advisory board hopefully coming up for your approval because of Rachel. She has just been an asset like I've never seen. She has one of the best work ethics of any public employee I've ever met. And I've been, was a public employee for 34 years myself, and in the last 15, 17 years in the private sector. But to find someone with that work ethic and dedication to her job is rare this day and time. I'll tell you that because it's just something, whatever business you're in, I think we all can resonate with that. She has worked diligently to make this city a better place to live, and I can't tell you how much New Leaf appreciates her and what she has done for us to navigate this, through this process of building this arboretum. And we're going to miss her, but we wish her the best in her new job. Thank you, Rachel, for everything you've done for this city and for New Leaf.
Thank you, Rhett.
Ryan, Ryan Kerr, owner of Burlington Sock Puppets.
Yeah, Harden, I appreciate you asking me to speak here today. And when Rachel told me a few weeks ago that she was going to be leaving the city, I was certainly bummed originally, but so excited for her as she moves forward in her career. So, I had the luxury of meeting Rachel back in 2011, right when she started with the city. And then 10 years later to fast forward and see like the growth in her career, and as Harden, you mentioned all the different ways that she's impacted the city and worn so many different hats. It truly is remarkable. So, I'm confident, Harden, that in the next 10 days, you will get that every bit of Rachel because that's the person she is. I'm not sure I've met a more hard-working person. I'm not sure I've dealt with more 2:00 AM emails than from Rachel Kelly, but she is constantly working. And I truly appreciate just her dedication, her passion. I'm not sure personally if over the past 15 years, or 15 months, we could have gotten through this wild and wacky year without Rachel. So, thank you, Rachel, so much. As an Elon guy, I guess this will be the first time I say go Spartans, but I really do wish you the best of luck. They're getting an unbelievable person, an unbelievable colleague, and somebody that's going to do such special things in your career. So, don't be a stranger, and thank you so much for everything.
Thanks, Ryan. We'll see you at the Sock Puppets games.
Amen.
Jessica Arias, who wants to go next?
Well, thanks, Harden, for this opportunity to allow me to express my appreciation for Rachel and the meaningful contributions she's made for our city and for the Animal Services Department. Under her leadership, our Animal Services Department has made remarkable growth and many achievements over the last several years as a direct result of her forward-thinking and openness to innovation. Rachel's been an inspiration to me, and I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with a leader like her that cares so much for all members of our community, including both people and animals that we serve. I wish her the very best in her new endeavor and know that those who have the opportunity to work with her will benefit from her management style, skill, and expert leadership. They are lucky to have someone of Rachel's caliber and no doubt will appreciate her as much as we do. Thanks, Rachel, for all you've done for the city.
Thanks for letting me be a part of it, Jess.
Morgan Lassiter?
Thanks. Yeah, a lot has already been said, but definitely the first couple notes I started making are tireless work ethic. So, I definitely concur with that and have been very fortunate to see that firsthand when working with Rachel. I've been up here for about five years from rec, so it was definitely an adjustment, and Rachel has made that just so smooth. And I think what I will take away from this experience with her is the professional development and the importance of that and making sure that we're taking care of ourselves as employees. And she's done that for so many, not even the ones that she is the manager for, but in this role of public information, you work with the entire city. So, you get to know everybody and know everything, and I think that's maintained as she's even moved into Assistant City Manager. She's maintained those relationships and really taken the time to make sure we as an organization are healthy and doing what we need to do to take care of ourselves, too. So, I appreciated that so much. UNCG is lucky to have her and sad to see her go, but excited that we'll still hopefully remain Facebook friends. So, I think we'll still see her around town, hopefully. So, thank you, Rachel, for everything you've done.
Thanks, Morgan. Couldn't do without you.
So, Mayor, that's all I have. If I want to yield the floor back to you, if you or council members would like to say a few words.
City Manager. Councilmembers, any parting words for Rachel?
I think the agreement was she couldn't leave till the carousel thing was built.
That's correct.
You broke the contract. If I could, Harden, Rachel, the first day I met Rachel, she came in the office and she sat in the chair on the edge of the chair, and she was nervous as a cat. I could tell. But it didn't take very long to figure out that she had all the tools to do what she's accomplished. And I recall in many days, I used to have to tell her to go home, Rachel, about quarter to six or six o'clock, and she was still in her office. But she's multi-talented. She's a fine person and in her own way, a really great communicator and does it in a very sincere way. So, UNC's win is Burlington's loss on this one, but God bless you, and you do wonderful things there.
Mayor, if I could, this is Bob Ward. Rachel, I've known you since day one. I really appreciate your contribution to the city. And over the years, I've called you from time to time, and I really just was very impressed that, I mean, your responsiveness was nothing short of outstanding. In other words, when I called you, asked you something, I considered it done. I never gave it another thought. And that just speaks, just wonders of you because, I mean, you knew that helping people was what it was all about. And that's what we're all about. And you just personify that and the way you approach public service. I told you before, and I'll tell you again, I like your style. You've got a quiet, unassuming style, but very effective. And I'll just say this, thanks for your many contributions. And we look forward to seeing you drop by from time to time, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I appreciate it.
I just want to say that I've been in denial until tonight. I guess that I'm going to have to accept the inevitable here. I think it's a huge loss for us and for me personally because I've enjoyed working with you, Rachel. And I know you will do well wherever you go, and I wish you the best going forward. I hope you will keep in touch with us.
Yeah, thank you, Stikes.
Yeah, you know, everybody's really summed up your personality and your contributions very well, but you know, you're such a beautiful human being, too. And the times, the many years that we've worked together from council items, it's your steadfast personality, always there, always with a great attitude. There are things that you remember about people forever, and that's the one thing that I'll always know about you, and that'll continue. But I wish you all the best. You deserve it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Ryan, you owe her and her husband season tickets for a long time, okay?
I told you. She can now have a few more beers. She's off the clock.
That's right. She can. That's right. Be more fun, won't it?
We bought our opening night tickets. We'll be there.
In losing Rachel, Burlington is losing our real-life Leslie Knope. She has brought just incredible passion and drive to our community. And I think her focus has been so much on opportunity for our residents to engage, to participate in local government, to provide their feedback. And I think people across our community are grateful for the service that she's rendered in her years here. And I'm excited about what she's going to do for opportunity in higher education as she moves on to her next career. So, thank you so much, Rachel. It's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further comments?
Rachel, if you come back on the screen during this meeting, you should change your background to the one the mayor just referenced.
I have that one.
Yes.
I appreciate you all. Thank you for the opportunity. Burlington's a special place, and I work with really incredible people that care deeply, so it's been a privilege. Thank you.
With that, we will keep moving on with our meeting. At this time, I'll recognize our interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So. Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes regarding the motion. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to approve an annual agreement for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 between the city of Burlington and Witsit Fire Department for First Responder Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Technician Services, effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Item B, to make the following appointments, the arboretum at Willow Brook Park Technical Advisory Board. The details of those are spelled out in your agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. We have a number of unfinished business items from our previous meeting. Uh, the first item is continued from our May 18th, 2021 city council meeting for the purpose, sole purpose by general statute to allow additional written comment period for 24 hours. Item number one, a public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential District to CI Conditional Industrial District for the use of a cemetery. The property is located on north side of Hanford Road and north of Old Coach Road and being a portion of Almetts County Tax Identification Number 131303. City Council will now resume its public hearing continued from May 18th, 2021. At this time, I'll recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Good evening. Uh, there was one written comment received. It was a list of names and contact numbers that were in support of the approval of the rezoning request. This document has been provided to city council.
Very good. Thank you, clerk. Council members, any questions regarding the comment? Or do I hear um, a motion to close our public hearing?
I've got a statement to make, Mayor, after uh, the closing of the public hearing for the record.
Sure.
A move that would, public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to close, close public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed, motion to close public hearing has passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Regarding this motion, staff has persist, uh, provided you with the green sheet with recommended action items on this. Do I hear a motion?
I, I'd like to make a statement and a motion, Mayor, if I could. But, okay, I uh, and I, I apologize for reading this, but I wanna make sure I get it all covered. So uh, as a preliminary matter and for clarification of the record, I would like to state that there had been considerable conversation and correspondence regarding the religion of the petitioner. I respectfully submit that such discussion is not appropriate for this rezoning. Simply stated, in my opinion, I do not believe this to be a First Amendment, constitutional free exercise of religion matter. I'd like to further state, city staff has ably and conscientiously served the city as required by city ordinances in processing this application for rezoning. I have no evidence nor am I aware of any religious animals on the part of city staff. Just as attorneys Lawson, Brown and Ryan Moffett have, as required by their legal ethics, represented, represented their client with zeal. The same can be said for city staff in performing their planning role for the city. I would like to turn now to the issue before the city council and that is plain and simply a request for rezoning a piece of property so that it can be used as a cemetery. First, again, in all due respect, I do not believe our inquiry should extend to who, what entity owns the property under consideration. Therefore, I believe it inappropriate to consider the religion of the owner as part of our deliberations and decision-making process. Second, our inquiry should focus on the proposed cemetery use, the consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan and other relevant factors such as the location of the property. Third, simply stated and stay on point, before this council is the issue of the use of the property for cemetery. Uh, cemeteries are a very unique use. Cemetery use by its nature is, is a very passive use. Cemeteries are not used every day and are only used infrequently and the use is for short periods of time. The proposed cemetery would be small and land area consistent of 1.2 acres and the use would be very infrequent. Use of this property as a cemetery is generally compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area. The use of this property as a cemetery is unique and passive in nature and it will not have a negative impact on future land assembly and use when industrial development and is therefore compatible with the comprehensive plan. Uh, Mayor, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion uh, to approve uh, the rezoning, but I'll stop there and see if anyone has anything else they'd like to say before I make that motion.
Council member Ward, I think it'd be best to have a motion on the table before we have discussion.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, I will, I will proceed to the motion. And as uh, option two, uh, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential District to Conditional Industrial District and to amend the comprehensive plan accordingly. The property is located on the north side of Hanford Road and north of Old Coach Road, referenced as Almetts County Tax Identification Number 131303. While this request is inconsistent with the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan and that it calls for this area to have industrial uses, city council approved, city council approves and finds that the request is compatible with the approximate and uh, industrial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest and that the comprehensive plan calls for industrial uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Very good. Council, any discussion or questions regarding the motion?
Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kathy. I'm sorry.
I wanna support what, what Bob said. I, I do think that because of the kinds of conditions that have been put on this, that it is a, a reasonable use for the land. But I do also wanna say that I have not, um, except through implication from people who support uh, this proposal for the cemetery. I have not found anybody in the city who has any feelings about this in terms of who the people are who are applying. And um, it, it's been troubling to me that people would think that that was something that had uh, any effect on anything that we had to say here. The staff were doing what we have asked them to do, which is to try to maintain as well as we could industrial land for development in the future, which we felt was in the best interest of the city. But I also feel like this uh, can certainly be um, done well and not affect any future industrial development.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Council member Owen?
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up with both of their statements. Uh, this was a request that uh, garnered an awful lot of attention. I, I certainly wanna uh, agree with what Ms. Hike said that the staff that was involved in this process is a group of very professional employees. And I, 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 I do at times, uh, I was somewhat concerned by some of the comments that was made uh, indicating that uh, their efforts was maybe excessive in this review process. They did their job. But with that being said, I think the, the type use that's there, the venue is being proposed, the small piece of property and, and really as Bob indicated, what's located around this piece of property in terms of two neighboring churches and, in, in that area. I do agree that I think this is an appropriate use uh, for the property.
Thank you, council member. Council member Butler, any comments or questions?
Just, just us, I, I made a statement at the last meeting about um, the, the role of city staff and obviously um, their burden is to make decisions based on the policies and the plans that we've adopted. And Bob so eloquently put it that I couldn't. I mean, they fulfill their obligations without prejudice. And um, you know, I support them 100%. Their uh, forward thinking, like, the, the recommendations by staff are based on future events, not just today's events. And uh, I, I wanna go on record to say and I wholeheartedly support and, and defend their willingness to really uh, work on these tough items and try to stay within the policies and the parameters that the elected body has set forth. And um, it's always to me, nothing short of miraculous how they do their jobs. And uh, I appreciate them for it.
Thank you. I do wanna add to the comments that I appreciate the petitioner's patience in this process, as mentioned by previous members. This cemetery is represent probably one of the most challenging rezonings in, in city work, mainly because they represent a nearly forever use. The only more challenging rezoning would be potentially the relocation of a cemetery, which our city has dealt with in our history and is, is not easy in any respect. Um, and so I think our goal here is really to make a decision that respects the community, respects the land use and will, will be something that we can live with in perpetuity for the city. Uh, and there's very few cases where we have to make a decision that lasts that long. Um, and so I think taking the time to be very deliberate about it, taking the time to really look at this from all angles is absolutely critical. So we appreciate the, the work that went into this and thank you again to the petitioner for their, their patience in this process. Any further council questions or discussion before um, we vote on this item? Motion to approve as inconsistent has been made by council member Ward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion has passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward and Owen. At this time, we will move on to item three. Sorry, item two on our agenda. A public hearing has been continued to consider an application to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential to GB General Business. The property is located north of University Drive and Boone Station Drive, the intersection and south of Rural Retreat Road across from Josie Davidson Park. The property totals 13.82 acres in size, is addressed as 3802 Rural Retreat Road and is referenced as Almetts County Tax Identification Number 106912. City council will now resume its public hearing continued from the May 18th, 2021 city council meeting. This time, I'll recognize our city clerk to indicate if there were any written comments received on this item.
There were no comments uh, received.
Very good. Hearing that there were no comments received, do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
Move. Second.
Motion to close by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Staff has provided council with uh, recommended motions on uh, language on the pink sheet. Right, members, council members, do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request uh, to rezone for MDR Medium Density Residential to GB General Business. Property is located north of the, of the University Drive and Boone Station Drive and south of Rural Retreat Road across from Josie Davidson Park. Property totals 13.82 acres in size and is addressed as 3802 Rural Retreat Road and is referenced as Almetts County Tax Identification Number 106912. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have commercial and residential use. The request is compatible with adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for commercial and residential uses in the area. And regress, the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area itself. And just to go off script a minute. The, this approval is, if you look at this particular request, perfectly fits what it lays out to be. You have a public park across it, you have residential neighbors beside it. Then the business section is gonna be on the, be on the west part of it. So it's, it's really a, an ideal use of how proper zoning can work with a car community, I believe.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, the motion is to approve as consistent made by council member Owen and seconded by council member Butler. Any questions or comments regarding this motion? All right. Uh, again, the motion to approve as consistent. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler and Owen. To the petitioners, thank you for your uh, work on this and we appreciate you attending this follow-up meeting. We now move to new business this evening. Item three on our agenda, city council will consider the following link transit service enhancement recommendations to resume regular weekday service operations ending uh, 8:00 PM effective June 7th, 2021, to convert the link transit to a fare-free system effective June 7th, 2021, and to begin a Saturday service beginning at 9:30 AM until 6:30 PM, late summer when staffing allows, and to have staff begin planning weekday service with an end time of 9:30 PM. This time, I'd like to recognize our director of planning and transportation, Mike Nun. Welcome, Mike. I've got a screen coming up from you.
Good, good evening, Mayor and councilman. As we discussed, I believe it was around the first of May when you were talking about other federal funds, you asked for some link transit information, although not eligible. For those funds, we already received the CARES funds. And came to the, the consensus to, as these items you just read off, I just wanna go over those in case there's any questions. As you recall, we did end, we did what we call reduce service when COVID began over a year and a half ago. We reduced our service to end at 6:30. Our normal operating day on a weekday is to 8:00 PM. Uh, what we're proposing here is to, on June 7th, which is Monday, next Monday, to return to that, to our regular service to end at 8:00 PM on the weekday. Also, uh, at the, on June 7th date, we would convert all link transit service to fare-free system. We would no longer collect the dollar fare or the reduced fare. Would benefit uh, not just the riders, but just the overall administration process that we have with our fare system. And we've seen nationwide and we've also seen locally the last five years of, of uh, link transit. Every anniversary day, we've either done a day or a week for free, free fare. And we've uh, most, you know, prior to 2020, we've doubled our ridership for that day or that week. So that should be very effective. So June 7th, we'll go back to 8:00 PM and we'll also start the fare-free system. The other exciting news, uh, which is in, in, in combination with our five-year anniversary, which is, is June 6th, um, June 7th will be our Monday of that week. But we'll begin Saturday service as we can hire additional drivers. This is gonna be uh, in response not only to, to COVID, pre-COVID. Uh, a lot of our first request after we started the system was, I need to get around the weekend, you know, specifically Saturday. It was the first thing we heard early on. So not only responding to public comments and requests, but also, you know, the, the economy that we're in now and the access to jobs and education. Uh, the challenge was this, as with most business, public and private now, is employee hiring. Uh, this will require additional drivers. That is underway right now. So we don't have a specific time for that. We are hoping a goal would be summer to fall. We are uh, hiring additional six operators uh, and probably two supervisors for that operation. That will be from 9:30 AM to 6:30 PM. Uh, this will match our weekday service as far as stops and routes. There'll be no new stops or no new routes, but we'll just go to a, a reduced service a little bit from a 9:30 AM start to a 6:30 PM end time. Uh, and I've, I've got an update today. We are actually hired two drivers. So we're on our way to, to, to hiring that staff to start that. And then the last time that we discussed, uh, which is another request we had from the public prior to, to COVID, was looking at extending the service to a 9:30 PM end time on a weekday. So we wanna evaluate obviously those first three as we get back underway uh, and then see the best way to approach uh, and what date that would be for the 9:30 PM end time for our weekday service. And I do want to remind everybody that it has been five years, uh, this June, June 6th. That's a Sunday, so June 7th is our day. But five years of linked transit service since city council approved uh, the startup of this system. And it's, it's been tremendous. COVID has impacted everyone everywhere. So we do have, you know, reduced stats, if you will, for the last year or so. But prior to that, everything has been increasing. We've had great uh, support from the community. Ridership uh, has, was consistent uh, and increasing. So we look forward to getting back to that. But tonight, just wanted to, to brief you again on this. Uh, you know, our two, two key dates will be June 7th to go back to normal operations and fare-free. And we'll work as hard as we can to hire staff to get to a Saturday service.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Council members, any questions regarding this or do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the recommendations.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
No, second.
Motion to approve by council member Butler, seconded by council, or sorry, paid by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. Councilmembers, any questions or comments regarding the motion?
I would just like a report back on the effect of the fare-free system at some point.
Definitely.
Let us know about the ridership and how that's worked out.
Will do, for sure.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it as well.
Other council comments? Do want to state that for quite some time, I've recognized and talked about how in our community and and any community, people and opportunity are never equally spread across the city. And so transportation like linked transit continues to be an absolutely critical way that we bridge that gap between people and opportunity. And I want to extend a huge thank you to staff for continuing to keep an eye on how do we increase that access to opportunity through the linked transit system. So these service improvements are a huge step forward in that, and we look forward to seeing those ridership numbers increase. I also want to encourage folks, those linked transit fare cards are going to become a collector's item. So if you want to rush out and buy them, we would be happy to sell you fare cards for your collection. Any other council comments or questions? With that, I'll call the vote on this. Again, motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we are on item four on our agenda. City Council will consider temporarily closing the following streets during the forty ninth Annual Alamance Regional Car Show on Saturday, August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one, from seven A M to four P M, contingent upon meeting all the requirements of the special events permit application process. The closures will include West Front Street from South Worth Street to South Spring Street, South Main Street from East Davis Street to West Front Street, and a portion of City Lot Number Two. This time I'd like to recognize our Recreation Park Special Event Supervisor, Emily Crowley.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We've got a lot of great events that folks are excited to do after a full year of no events. And and one of the first ones is the Antique Car Show, which is in its forty ninth year. We've got Ms. Elizabeth Kobel here with us this evening, who is with Alamance Region Antique Automobile Club of America. We're both happy to answer any questions that you have about the event or the street closures.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers.
As you said, as you said, this is our forty ninth. It should be our fiftieth because we missed last year.
Well, we're glad that you're coming back, so.
Thank you.
Anything you want to tell us about the event and what you've got planned for this year?
Well, it'll be a typical car show. We are planning to put the class judged cars and the modifies or hot rods together. Previously, we've had them in separate areas because the classic cars are actually judged. The hot rods and modifies are not judged. But we plan to intermingle everything this year, which will be different. So you get to see what an old car might look like if it's modified or hot rodded with a big engine. And then you get to see the actual original looking car. And that's the goal of the Antique Automobile Club of America, is to share with people, young and old, their memories and their new new finds with the antique cars and preserving them.
Very good. Councilmembers, any question for Elizabeth?
It's it's a fun show.
Thank you. We enjoy doing it.
I'll share with my pandemic time, I finally finished restoring my nineteen seventy four classic car after fifteen years of work. So I look forward to actually joining you as a participant this year.
We want you. Thank you. In two thousand nineteen, we actually had a hundred and twenty five cars that came to downtown Burlington. There were people from southeastern Virginia, there were people from Ashboro, people from Sanford, Greensboro, and the Greensboro group loves to go to Zach's when they come downtown Burlington.
It's always a highlight for anyone visiting Burlington. Very good. Thank you, Elizabeth. Councilmembers, do I hear a motion regarding this event?
I make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Elizabeth, thank you so much for being here tonight, and we look forward to a wonderful event on August twenty eighth.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
We keep our fingers crossed for good weather out there.
Exactly.
All right, next on our agenda, item five, our city council will consider approving the use of Lake Kamak for a swimming portion of the fourteenth annual Buckner Mission Man Triathlon, hosted by Front Street Methodist Church on July thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special event permit application process. This time, I'd again like to recognize Recreation Park Special Event Supervisor Emily Crowley.
Thank you again, Mayor. So the Mission Man Triathlon's been taking place at Lake Kamak for over fourteen years. They utilize the lake for the seven hundred and fifty meter swim, which is one of the three components of the triathlon. So tonight's request is to receive approval for them to have special use of the lake for this swim portion of the triathlon. And then upon approval, the appropriate paperwork will be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Water Quality for that final approval. Ms. Susan Morris is here this evening, and she's one of the coordinators of the triathlon. So if y'all have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Very good. Thank you for joining us, Susan. Anything you'd like to tell us about the event or add to the discussion?
We're hopeful to be back this year. We were sad not to be able to race last year. We have lots of participants that come from all over North Carolina to participate, and we're just really looking forward to get getting back out there to race.
Very good. Councilmembers, any questions for Susan? All right, do I hear a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Thank.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Emily. As with the car show, we'll be hoping for some good weather for your event, and we look forward to seeing folks back out there. We appreciate your perseverance in bringing the event back after the pandemic.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
With that, we'll move to item six on our agenda. City Council will consider a request from the Burlington Police Department to apply for the COPS Hiring Program Grant. This time I'll recognize Assistant Chief of Police, Chris Gaddis. Welcome, Chris. Chris still with us?
I'm here.
All right, there we go, and we've got a screen share coming up.
Yes, it should be up. Let me know if you see it.
It is up now.
Fantastic. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk to you about an opportunity that just arrived for us basically a few weeks ago. It's a a COPS grant opportunity that has come through the Department of Justice, similar to what occurred for us back in twenty sixteen. If you recall, we were able to apply and were approved for an opportunity back then to hire officers through that program. This particular program is very similar. It is federal funded for three years for personnel cost only. So if we participated, then we, the city, would have to purchase the equipment and all other operational expenses. The neat thing about this one is, in in relation to twenty sixteen, they had a two-year retention period, whereas after the grant expires, we would have to keep the program at a at a minimum of two years. This particular program is a one-year retention period, which which brings down the the cost a little bit for the city. It is capped at one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars per position for the life of the program or the three-year grant. And it has a couple of different focus areas. One of the areas that we're looking at is gun violence and violent crime. And then I wanted to also mention that recently it did come up, come to us in early May. We were notified of this very, very quickly. So we we only have a turnaround period of a few more weeks, so we kind of got to wanted to get this on your radar to seek approval for us to apply for this. And if 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 we're approved through the through the program, then we would return back in the fall or probably winter time to to talk about the funding and to seek further down the road. So our thoughts for this program are are to look to hire six officers. And what we would do is be to deploy each officer on one of our six patrol shifts. So for many years, we've onboarded different positions, different special groups. But one of the things that we've never truly done is is bring on additional patrol staff. What we found is that these special groups, special investigators and et cetera, they do great work. But sometimes having boots on the street and folks that can respond immediately with necessary information is vital. So one of the things that we've talked about doing and thought about in this program is to basically add one one cop per shift, and we would deem as as an intelligence officer on the shift, not saying that our our cops are not intelligent, but to share that intelligence latterly across each particular shift and have that consistent information flowing concurrently twenty-four seven while while they're there. This information is going to be comprised by speaking to our intelligence sergeants, our criminal criminal analyst unit. They'll also work with our NIBIN-trained officers and staff members. NIBIN, if you recall, is a national database for identifying ballistics through gun crimes. We already have staff that's trained, but our thought process is to pass along this information when to our staff on the street immediately when they recover a firearm or if they're on the scene of a of a crime related to a firearm where ballistics are found, then we can pass that information along to them very, very quickly and get that back to the staff a lot faster than we've been able to do in the past. They also work a lot with our gun prosecutor, our our federal gun prosecutor that we have through the U S Attorney's Office here. We work very closely with them, and that's one more resource that we can have immediately on the street at all times. And they're going to work with their teammates to pass this information back and forth. To be able to share this consistently is really, really important. Sometimes when we do have staff that are trained in this, but they may not be able to pass it on to them because they're going to have days off. So we're going to have implanted on each shift someone with this information, someone that's trained, and they can spearhead a lot of the lot of the discussions within their their shifts. They can plan for proactive crime measures to help curb some of this violence that we're seeing. And then they're going to be highlighting this information so they can truly focus on the most violent of offenders. And those are the ones that we we really want to to make sure that we've got a good handle on. And then ultimately, at the end of the day, is that if we focus on these offenders and are able to keep it latterly across the shifts at all times, then ultimately, the end result that we believe is going to be the quality of life is going to improve. And then the reduction of those crimes that are going to occur, and our staff can then continue to enhance and focus on the community involvement activities. So probably the biggest thing that from council, of course, you want to keep the the city safe, but you also kind of want to know what 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 is this going to cost us? So ultimately, at the end of the day, it is a little bit upfront money from us because the first year, we've got to, with hiring staff, we're going to have an increase in equipment and operational expenses. So that first year is kind of costly. But if you see across the top line, the grant funding is gonna is going to be maxed out per staff member a hundred and twenty five thousand, as mentioned earlier. We do have a minimum amount that we have to participate of twenty five percent. But because of our salaries and benefits, that puts us in, we have to contribute about twenty seven percent. So not not as great, but not bad at twenty seven percent. So it's going to be approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're going to receive from the federal government for the first three years of that. And ultimately, at the end of the of the program, as you can see toward the the bottom there, the projected cost over over the the lifespan of this is going to be about eight hundred and three thousand dollars, and that includes the full retention period of year four. But at the same time, we're also going to be the benefit of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cost of that through five, excuse me, through four years. We envision that this is going to enhance, again, our proactive measures and the safety of the community by adding these six intelligence officers on the street. And we're basically coming to you tonight to to ask for your permission to apply for the grant. And then we'll be back, if if approved, we'll return in the fall to seek your your permission to move forward on it. And I'll yield to you all now for any questions or concerns you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, any questions regarding this presentation?
Will these actually be sworn positions, or will they be treated differently?
They will be sworn personnel, yes, or they're going to be be sworn officers. And typically, as you all know what we do when we apply for grants and we employ these, is that we typically take currently trained officers from different parts of the agency, place them in the positions, and then we backfill with with newly hired officers on the back end with this with this funding. So the 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 thought process would be to use existing personnel and those that are that are that are trained right now, and that gives us a jumpstart on that process.
So if we actually were awarded the grant, if memory serves me correct, and and you can bring me up to speed if I'm wrong, but we're we're approximately ten sworn positions short right now?
Currently, we're eight short, correct.
So we we would transfer six from our existing ranks and then try to backfill those. So we would, would we effectively go down fourteen officers at that time, assuming that we don't get full?
Probably what we would do, sir, is actually name those positions currently with our existing staff. We would keep the the present patrol staff the same. We would not transfer, and I may have misspoke, we would not transfer anyone currently in other positions within the department because then that would short-staff those positions. So we would go ahead and name the officers currently on patrol now, name them into these positions, and then we would hire those to backfill the other positions. And then then upon successful graduation through their field training programs and their training schools, then they would be positioned, we would add those one additional bodies back into patrol to backfill those openings, if that makes sense.
But Chris, go over that one more time. If you took six, you went with the six number. If you took six of your present officers and and basically place them in these positions, as Jim indicated, then you've got eight vacancies now. So that would give you, correct me if I'm wrong, but then you would still have to backfield, obviously, those eight vacancies is what you're still recruiting for. Is that correct?
Yes, so we would employ the the current staff that we have on patrol now. We would name them, give them some duties and responsibilities for this this these positions. But yes, we would onboard six more that we would have to hire and then put through school. Or if they're lateral officers, we'd put them directly into field training. And then upon the completion of those programs, they would be placed back into patrol or cycled through the organization in other openings.
And other council questions?
Yeah, I I have something I just want to talk about in terms of bringing up the discussion. As I looked at this and the areas that the grant could fund, my first reaction was that what we probably could use is police-based response to people in crisis. It seems to me that that's what we've heard about a lot in in terms of our current policing, that there's a lot of pressure on on the police to respond to mental health issues, to homeless issues, to domestic issues, and those kinds of things. And it seems like that is what is one of the things that that increases the pressure. I was thinking about it because in my my experience with rape crisis, when I was a founder of of what is now Crossroads, the police were not very interested in having us have anything to say about rape victims. But over time, it became apparent that we could be helpful. And now I think that there's nobody questions whether or not that kind of support from a community agency wouldn't be a good idea. from a community agency wouldn't be a good idea. So I think with, policing is changing or it, or people are thinking about different ways of doing policing. And I just wonder if we wouldn't want to think, I think it would be more novel in terms of what a grant reader was reading, if we were thinking about doing something like having police support for people in crisis. You know, we have some experience with the youth diversion officer and with the counselor that we have in, involved now. So we would be able to point to that as a way of kind of bulking up our application by saying, we've got a little practice with this. And this would be a good way for us to come up with a, a pilot, if you will, and give us some experience in looking at different ways of bringing counselors in or, or social worker or just a, a different way of looking at how we, we do this kind of policing. I'll just bring that forward. I think it would give relief to police officers and it would solve some problems that we haven't been able to solve or resolve with the policing that we're doing now. So maybe embedding those people in some of the shifts would be a good idea for a grant application.
I, I certainly do agree, Ms. Hikes. We've had great success over the last few years that we've participated in our, in our processes and work through our contracts that we've been using for our law enforcement crisis counselors. Our staff have been trained remarkably well over the last few years, probably a lot more well-trained than I ever received, you know, 20, 25 years ago. We've got a lot of staff on the street that do a remarkable job with that. The model that we found successful is the one that we're utilizing now is that we do contract with these clinicians instead of onboarding them as direct employees. We do find that, as you are aware, that it does take on some additional liability when we do look to onboarding direct staff that are clinicians. And the, the cost analysis of that can be quite costly, even though a police officer position is costly. Clinicians are also as well. But we certainly would definitely highlight that, that our, our success in those areas. And if that's the route that you would prefer that we go, we could, we could continue that conversation. And I would be directed by Manager Watkins and others as to the direction that we would like to entertain with that. But as we analyze the, the opportunities here, we found that this particular method seemed to fit our needs presently at this point. And it fit, met the scope of the particular grant application at this time period. And as mentioned, not making excuses, but as mentioned earlier, we are in a very, very tight window when this opportunity arrived at the beginning of May. We wanted to get it on your radar as soon as possible. And then we have about three weeks to turn a product in and get it sent to Washington, D.C. So we'll definitely take, you know, your advice in the direction that you'd like for us to go.
Chief, I will tell you, in reading your narrative of the, the BPD focus, I'm going to read just an excerpt. It says that, "Over the last eight years, gun-related violent crime has increased in our jurisdiction. Crimes of shooting into occupied dwellings, discharging of a firearm and other violent crimes have occurred more frequently." And I'll have to tell you, and I'd be curious to get commentary from, from other council members, but this is the number one topic that I hear out in the community, is what is up with all of these drive-by shootings, shooting into houses? I think it was just last week, there was a car shooting at one another on Huffman Mill Road. So what you guys are saying is that this is violent crime focus and gun violence so that you can expedite communication between shifts. If I read your narrative, you, you say that that's what bridges the investigation to the point of success. Is that correct?
It does, yes, sir. So if we have this information readily available to someone who's basically on point on each shift, they're receiving this intelligence, you know, daily, within the hours of getting this information. So as you all are aware, everything is moving so, so much quicker technology-wise. So even the, the most violent offenders, they're using social media platforms. They're using other streams of technology to share their information. And the, the quicker that we can respond to that, get the information back to our points of contact on, on the shifts that are working 24/7, then those are the, the types of information that we can act on a lot more quickly. When we have a delay, you know, we, we have staff members that are trained in certain aspects, but they're not always on shift at all the hours of the day. We may have to call them in after the fact or be reactive. And we're looking to be more proactive with this sharing of information, not saying that we're going to cure all the gun violence, but the quicker that we can act and be focused on a, a group of individuals or a group that may be causing some of these situations, we feel like we have a better opportunity to curtail some of this. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I for one think that we've got to be real careful with the grant program because at year five, we owned it all. And then, assuming that we're going to continue it forward. But anything that we can do to address the items that you have pointed out in paragraph one of your focus, shooting into occupied dwellings, drive-by shootings, discharging of firearms in public places, I think that is very concerning to our citizens. It's very concerning to me as an elected member, and, and I, I would, I would support it.
Mayor, if I can help with a couple of things, perhaps. I think in the conversations that I've had, as we've worked on our profile development process for what do we want to see in our next chief, I've had the opportunity to talk to probably 50 or so members of the police department, probably over 50 folks in the community. And, and I think there is commonality to what we are hearing and work with Assistant Chief Gaddis, Assistant Chief Long, and interim Chief Kearns is that we want to try to find some solutions to the things that are on folks' minds. And I think our officers are looking for more people to help them with their workload. And, and again, I'm going to lean on our police professional leadership team to tell us what, what that means and what that looks like. But I do know that our folks would love to see some relief coming their way. And again, I've had those conversations with the, the chiefs, the police chiefs. And this, this is what they've brought back. And I think it addresses some things, is, is what Mr. Butler said. There is obviously a, a concern about gun violence and violent crime in our neighborhood. And I think this, this is a way to maybe take, you know, knock out two concerns. We also have, our officers telling us they need more help day-to-day doing their work. And can we get some more people on the street? So what I've also asked our police leadership team to do is also work hard to get those vacant slots filled. I've committed my time and resources here in the manager's office to want to do what I can do to help on that. Our HR department is committed to do what they can do to help with that. So we have 10, 10 vacancies. I think we've got a couple in the hopper. Interim Chief Kearns told me we may actually have as many as six in the hopper. I'll let Assistant Chief Gaddis comment on that. So we're going to try to whittle at those numbers between now and when we get the grant. So hopefully by the time we get good news on the grant, and, and Chris, whether that's summer, that's going to be the fall, when that happens, hopefully our number is not 10, but it's a smaller number. And it's some of the questions we had early on in this conversation about how do you fluctuate those folks in there. It also will send a positive message to our police officers that were listening. And then we're trying to get some folks on the way. I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Gaddis if we'll also comment. I believe we have some programs in the works with RHA who provides the clinicians that you were speaking about. I believe we have a contract with RHA, and they are looking to expand and bring some more people onboard to the team, maybe using some Medicare or Medicaid funds. Can you speak a little bit about that, Assistant Chief?
Real quick, before you do, I, I appreciate you touching on the hiring piece because I know there's, there's generally recognized challenges related to filling vacant positions around the region and the country. And I was wondering, Chief, if you could touch anymore on kind of the additional work and the, that you're working on to fill those and then the confidence that you have that if we get these, we will be able to fill them in an effective, timely manner?
Maybe I'll start prior to filling the roles. So Manager Watkins highlighted an area that we have heard from our staff and visualized that the 21st century policing does cause extra workload upon staff. So to do an effective professional job, they do comment at times that they are overworked and overstretched. And it's, it's not unique to any other position in public service. So our staff has, has talked about that, and we analyze that on a daily basis and routinely. And we've made some adjustments, some, some policy changes. We've looked at adjustments of services and tried to put more focus on areas. One of those areas is in hiring and retention, recruitment. So those are things that we're routinely doing. We are not facing any, any different troubles or, or problems, or I should say difficulties that other police agencies across the region, across the state and across the country are faced with. We are using all types of venues and platforms to look to find the most qualified candidates. But one thing that I will say this is we have not reduced or lowered our standards. So even though we are sometimes seeing a lower number of qualified candidates who may want to go into the policing profession, we are still looking for those diamonds in the rough, so to speak, in trying to hire and recruit those top-quality candidates, the most diverse, the most, you know, forward-facing and looking of our community. And we're, we've been doing a good job of that. We do have, we do have, to my knowledge, right now, we have a school starting in July, and we have five onboard now. We have several that are, we're finishing up the processes. So we think we're going to be able to onboard a few more. And we also have a few lateral officers that are competitive in the process now. So I do feel that we will be in a better position moving in the fall potentially, that if things continue to work out as planned, that we may be in a, in a better number to come back before you, say in October or in the, when we, we get, excuse me, when we, when we are notified if we're approved for this through the DOJ to move forward, and then we'll return to you with a better number. We are hopeful, and we continue to work through this on a daily basis.
Thank you. If you want to touch on the manager's point about RHA?
Yeah, let me, let me add to the staffing number, Mayor, and then if you, if you don't mind, and then we can get back to the RHA question. So in my conversations, I have, I had the opportunity to speak with the, the chief in Riley, chief in Greensboro, chief in Chapel Hill. I was able to sit in on the Kalia call that followed ours and, and listen to City of Charlotte. What I'll report back is that Riley has 83 vacancies right now. Charlotte has 200 vacancies right now. Chapel Hill has 18 vacancies, and the chief indicated they've been carrying that number for about two to three years. I believe someone on, on our staff tallied up the number of vacancies across all the Alamance Municipal and Sheriff's Office here. And there are 45 current vacancies in the totality of Alamance County for police officers. So to give some data to back up Assistant Chief Gaddis's point is, this is a challenge for our region, for our state, and probably, it's probably seen this nationwide. So with that, Assistant Chief Gaddis, if you want to speak about RHA?
Sure. We have been in negotiations and discussions with RHA. They are looking for a, a different method of funding to employ basically a second law enforcement crisis counselor, someone who could carry a kind of a second shift and through weekends for us. We do know that we're limited on, on time and delivery for that counselor that we have onboard now. So we are working through that process and are very hopeful that they're going to be able to move forward. They're excited, they, they enjoy the program. They see a huge benefit and upside of participating in it, and the community as a whole does. So going back to Mrs. Hikes's questions earlier, we do understand that that is the direction of law enforcement. And we, from a, from a cop's perspective, from myself thinking, you know, if I was a, a young officer on the street, I wish I had these opportunities 20 and 25 years ago. And I was smart enough to even think of the concept. But the, the staff now truly enjoy having that ability and having that resource readily available. And it's very, very helpful.
That's, that's good news from RHA. I hope that works out. So I do think that is where we're going. And I think we need to reimagine some of the ways that we do things.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't think any of these needs are stronger than others. My, my point I'm getting to is, is that policing is obviously changing. It, as, as Jim indicated, though, for someone of, of, I've lived here since 1975, it's, it, it does even perplex and worry me when you see the number of shootings that consistently seem to come up. And, and it appears that just from some of the information we get, must send their random shootings, but it, it's just something that, gosh, I, I ring Chris 15, 20 years ago, we seldom saw with, you know, young people riding by and shooting in someone's house at the level we're, we're seeing that now. I, I just think we need to, to do our very best to get as many qualified officers on the street who are well-trained, who works as a group, who works with the various other law enforcement agencies in our region, just here in the county, obviously, within the various cities, but also regionally, to, to, to really focus on these issues. Because unfortunately, I don't see them, I don't see these issues being used a awful lot. It seems to me, and maybe some of it's because of the pandemic, but we, we see this becoming more and more common now. And it's, it's, it very well is going to take some manpower, I think, in an effort to try to deter some of that.
Other council comments or questions regarding this item?
I have a lot of comments, but I will, I will save them.
All right. We appreciate Manager and Chief Gaddis's efforts to answer those questions. Is there a motion from council regarding this item?
There, I'll make a motion to, 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 for the, for Chief, Chief Gaddis to apply for the COPS hiring grant. And we've got, we've got a tight timeframe, and sooner we can get decision made, quicker he can get to work.
A second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed? Motion is passed, with that for myself, Mayor Partem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Chief Gaddis, we appreciate you being here tonight, and we look forward to positive news on the grant application in coming months.
Yes, we'll, we'll return. Thank you.
I just, I want to just clarify with, with Chris that I support what you are doing. And I think that you've thought through this very well. I'm not criticizing that at all, I'm just trying to look at it from all angles. And my comment about holding back is that nobody talks about the whole issue of guns. And, and it's the elephant in the room. There just, there's so many guns out there, it's not on, that's, that's going to be the result. And it puts our police officers at great risk and our community at great risk, and we never talk about that. And so that was what I was holding my tongue about, not about the grant. So I support you and good luck.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you for the support. We do appreciate it.
All right. That, we will move on to item seven on our agenda. City council will consider authorizing city staff to submit a request to Senator Burr and Senator Tillis for CAD RMS overhaul and for new public safety radio equipment as part of the federal earmark process for 2021. This time we'll recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mayor. Assistant Chief Gaddis will help me with this one. And if if get Rachel Kelly on as well. Rachel's been working very closely. We've been working very closely with Jennifer Emo, our lobbyist with Ferguson Group up in DC. Ms. Emo has advised us, again with her ear to the ground in DC on our behalf, that there have not been, as the Senate offices are evaluating earmark requests, there have not been a lot of requests, near as many as you would think proportionally for public safety earmarks, and advised us maybe to go in that direction. As you all know, we have a long list of things that we would love to have the federal government help us with. We continue to work on all the infrastructure and project items in in tandem with this. This would be a specific earmark request to the US Senate, specifically to Senator Tillis. And our top proposal is a countywide CAD RMS system. And CAD is Community Computer Aided Dispatch, and RMS is Record Management System. How'd that do, Chris?
Hot on. Good job.
Okay, all right. So that's a countywide system. It's something we've been working on for the last several years. You may remember a work session a couple of years ago where we introduced some of that. We believe this is county-wide, a $2.8 million project. Roughly half of that is us, and probably half of that would be the county, maybe slightly off on the percentages. So our partners in this project, and this is again, using the advice from the Ferguson Group, is to find plenty of partners that might get the attention of our Senate Senators' offices. Our partners will be the Allamance County Communications Center, which is known as CCOM, the Allamance County Sheriff's Office, and we have received a letter of support from Sheriff Johnson already. We would obviously be City of Burlington Police, City of Burlington Fire. I think Jay Meven is is on the call today. We need him to speak as well as our fire chief. We would also be working, if you remember, we dispatched for City of Graham Police and City of Graham Fire. And also, with the CCOM, we have already received a letter of support from the county manager. We've also would involve the Allamance County EMS. We've received a letter of support from Ray Vipperman, the Director of EMS. So we feel like this is a really great regional service area. It implies everyone, it helps us make sure that we stay seamless. And, you know, this involves calls for service, all of our records, our police reports, our arrest reports, and all of our documentation, both for us and all the agencies I mentioned. The neat thing about the proposal as it's emerged is this is to replace an obsolete system. And if we could get some federal help here, it basically allows us in Allamance County not to hide top future budget dollars that could be used for operating expenses, say, one to two years, three years into the future, if we could, if figure out a way to get some federal assistance at this time. If that project is not of interest, and we do feel we're building some momentum, we could pivot and talk about a new public safety radio system. But if I understand how the conversation's going, I think we're looking, and it seems like we're developing really good consensus and momentum on the CAD RMS system acquisition. So Assistant Chief Gaddis or Ms. Kelly, what have I left out?
I think you've summarized it well. Our current systems, both for us and the county, we are the primary two, two systems that provide CAD, the computer-aided dispatch throughout all public service, public safety through the through the county and the cities, is at end of life. So the software is basically, they're not able to fix it. They're not able to patch it. They're not able to put a Band-Aid on it. I can vividly remember as a young officer some of the same systems that we're presently using were deployed then. As technology increases, we have to be able to expand. So that lifecycle is gone, and we've, we knew this was on our horizon. And then this opportunity has has come forth very, very quickly. And I think I said this earlier, but again, we need to strike while the iron's hot. And that's kind of where we've been working feverishly over the last week or so, try to put this together and get it to DC with a quality product. Ms. Kelly's been working very, very, very hard on this and helping us steer us in the right direction as well. And I'll let her speak if she wants to add anything as well.
The only thing I think worth adding is the fact that these earmark projects are very competitive. This is the first year in quite some time that that they've done these projects, and they've changed it up so that it is a more transparent process to the public. So our senators will have a limited number of projects they can support. And through discussing with our police, fire, and communications staff, I really do think this is a strong application for Senator Tillis to consider because not only is it helping the City of Burlington's public safety entities, but it's helping the entire county. And if we're able to achieve this federal funding, the smaller agencies that might have different fiscal cycles or ability to obtain the money will be able to get onboard at the same time as us. So as you know, emergencies don't stay in jurisdictional bounds. So this would allow everybody to seamlessly tackle tackle this project at the same time. And from what Assistant Chief Gaddis has researched, with the exception of maybe Charlotte Mecklenburg, which is a combined agency, we might be the first in the state to tackle something like this, which is exciting. And I know a lot of our partners and hopefully Senator Tillis would want to be part of.
And our partnerships with the county agencies are strong. And again, I want to, I think you all heard me say this, but I just reiterate the point. We could have found a project that was all for Burlington. The reality is this, we're going to take the lead on doing the legwork here, and Ms. Emo's helping us work with our present offices. But it's for the good of the whole county, and it's about probably half the benefit accrues directly to Burlington and half the benefit accrues to other agencies and other departments. And those are the kinds of projects we're looking for.
Yeah, I appreciate you all taking that focus wherever we can.
Well, hard, you've got to remember, you know, Allamance County, you start to the far west in terms of Gibsonville, and all of our cities are connected, literally connected, and to the east, to Meven. So it's 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 not just one community, it's all these communities together. And frankly, with public safety, it's it's looked at as a whole, not just an individual organization or part of the part of the community of the county. So I think this is, this is a good thought of trying to bring people together, to work together and benefit as multiple agencies to to go forward with this type of system.
Chief Meven, is there anything you wanted to add?
Sir, I can say that I've reached out to several departments today and also Allamance County Emergency Management, Allamance County Fire Marshal's Office, and several others, and received immediate response and sincere gratitude from from many of those members that responded, that they was happy to see this taking place.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions regarding all that's been presented on this? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city staff to submit a request to Senator Tillis and Burr as proposed as part of the federal earmark process in 2021.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Butler. I do want to comment and thank Rachel for bringing up that this represents an opportunity for the first in the state. I appreciate when Burlington can take leadership role like that and help pave the way, especially in a collaborative project like this. Councilmembers, any questions or further comments regarding the motion to approve or authorize? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hykes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. That concludes our regular agenda for this evening. To Evan, Chief Gaddis, and to Assistant Manager Kelly, thank you for your help on that item. Now is our public comment period. If anyone is still with us and wishes to make a public comment at this time, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. John Vernon is still standing by to assist you with any technical or connection troubles at 336-513-5440. Again, use the raise hand feature or star nine if you wish to submit a public comment right now. At this time, I'll recognize our city clerk, indicate if we received any written public comments.
Mayor, public comments received.
Real, real quick, before we proceed, I've got to drop off the call. I wanted to wait till we got through our business. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Councilmember Butler.
Yep. Good night, good night, everyone.
Hey, dude.
All right. Again, we are in our public comment. There are no written comments submitted. Just another moment if you do wish to use the raise hand feature or star nine. Looks like there are no requests for public comments. So at this time, we will move to city council comments. Councilmembers, any comments you'd wish to share? You know, it wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't have a couple, so I want to make a quick few announcements. One, if you haven't seen some of the new murals popping up around our community, there is a one just over on Spring Street that just got finished up with the Burlington name and some beautiful flowers. And then there's another one that is not part of our downtown mural project that is happening through private investment over on Trowland Street on the old Asher McAdams Pharmacy Building. And so by the same murals, too, did the Nipsey Hussle mural on North Church Street, Hardy Barksdale. So it's really exciting to see kind of that organic happening of community art and what was planted as an initial seed through our downtown group with one mural and by Mauricio, and now is is growing and spreading and adding color and life to our community. Also want to thank staff for the work on the Vaughn Roads road improvements. If anyone has not been over there yet, it is a beautiful example of a road diet with some protected bike lanes over there. It's good to see folks out and using that. I received a lot of public comment and feedback positively about that. Vaughn Road was desperately in need of some resurfacing, and that wasn't just resurfacing. That was a real infrastructure improvement for the communities along that that thoroughfare. And I want to remind folks that the North Park Pool and Splash Pad is open by reservation, which you can make online or by phone. And we recognize that that does present a barrier to some folks, but staff is standing by and ready to help folks have access to that amazing facility, especially as the weather gets warmer. I know a lot of folks were able to take advantage of that with those 90-degree days the other week. And it's good to see folks utilizing that beautiful new facility in North Park. I had a question for staff to possibly bring up at a future meeting. I know we have installed some new speed tables or speed bumps along Willowbrook Park and Fountain Place, as we've discussed about in previous meetings. Residents thank the city council for those. However, I'm, I don't know about other council members, but I'm receiving more and more requests for speed bumps all across the city. And I don't know that that's a sustainable initiative to cover our entire city in speed bumps. I know there's been discussion before about a citywide speed limit reduction, but I would like to possibly hear a report from staff at a future work session about what comprehensive speed reduction, vehicle speeding reduction strategies are possible for us to consider in our city. I don't know if any other community or council members are receiving comments like that from the public, but I know it's definitely becoming more and more prevalent in my emails and messages. Manager, does that seem like something we can bring back?
Yes, sir. We can get to work on that. If Owen can pop on his video, we could certainly get a report. Is that, can we do that at the July work session?
Well, I can tell you that staff is currently working with the Traffic Commission along those lines. So if it is pleased with council, you know, we could just let it come through the Traffic Commission in some form of recommendation at some point.
Do we have a an ETA on when that might move through Traffic Commission?
We don't have an exact ETA. We're just kind of starting those discussion with Traffic Commission. But it's along the lines of residential speed limit reduction across the board, I think, is one of the areas of discussion.
Okay.
So there's some different things that have to be considered as part of that, and staff wants to do due diligence with with that consideration.
Okay. Yeah, if we could hopefully see that in the next few months. Again, with the the fact that people are seeing these new speed tables and speed bumps and seeing some improvements from them, again, I think we're just going to receive more and more questions and comments from the public. So.
Yeah, and just along those lines, this this traffic common policy requires a 25 mile an hour speed limit prior to speed tables in most cases. So that would be a first step.
And then the last one, I just wanted to remind folks that the new Lidl grocery store is opening tomorrow. I know I'll be there bright and early for the ribbon cutting. I don't know if any of my fellow council members will be there, but I encourage you to come check out that new business, bring jobs to our community. Councilmembers, any further questions or comments you wish to share with the general public? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from all members present. Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your evening.
Good evening.
Good night.
Night.